Great. Okay, I call to order the Lynchburg Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, June 8th, 2022. The first order of business is the approval of our May 25th minutes. Has everybody had a chance to go over them? Any questions or changes? Or is there a motion?
I move to accept the minutes.
Second.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I think it was unanimous.
Stain.
Stain, all right. Great. The next order of business is the new business where we will hear the consideration of the petition of KAL Holdings LLC to amend the future land use map from community commercial to medium density residential and to rezone approximately one and three hundredths of an acre located at 620 Leesville Road from B1 Limited Business District to R3 Medium Density Residential District to allow the construction of duplexes.
Members of Planning Commission have approved this property would be combined with adjacent property at 628 Leesville Road to allow the construction of four duplexes. That would be eight total units in four buildings. The property is currently zoned B1 Limited Business District and has been zoned as such since 1979, which is right after annexation and that version of the zoning ordinance and map was adopted. About a year later, they came in and did a study along Timberlake Road, looked in this area and decided this property ought to be B1. Interestingly enough, it was actually, and has never been used for commercial purposes to our knowledge. It contained a residence up until 2002, at which time the assessors' records indicate that that structure was demolished, and it's been vacant up until this time. The property is currently recommended for community commercial land uses on the future land use map. These areas are really intended for retail, personal service, entertainment, restaurant uses, and large commercial centers that draw residents from several neighborhoods or up into the entire city. And they're also usually located at major intersections. While there's some business uses in the area, I think you've got like a limousine service and maybe a nail salon on either side, we don't believe that the community commercial land use is really appropriate for this section of Leesville Road, just given the size of the properties. Neighborhood commercial at best. The proposed medium density land use designation and rezoning would also be appropriate due to adjacent residential uses in the area. You've got some R1 uses to the west and duplexes also along that section of Leesville Road. If constructed, the concept plan indicates two access points. The northernmost access would serve these two duplex units while also continue to serve this adjacent commercial use and two residential structures further to the west, while the southern entrance would just serve these two duplexes. And it looks like they're also maintaining access back to another parcel that they own, but it's not currently being proposed for any development. While it's not required, planning staff recommends to the developer that they actually connect this driveway altogether to allow for connectivity, and we feel like people are probably just going to drive across that grassy area anyway. As proposed, the units will be served by Greater Lynchburg Transit Company. I believe it's Route 7 with a bus stop directly in front of the properties. The units would face Leesville Road, parking would be in the rear, and as proposed, the planning staff feels that the development would have little to no negative impact on Leesville Road of the area, and we do recommend approval of both the future land use map and the rezoning.
Great, thank you. And who will be speaking on behalf of the petition? And if you please state your name, sign, and tell us more about it.
My name is Norm Walton. I'm the engineer representing the developer. Mr. Brentwood is here as well. If you have any further questions. As Mr. Martin stated, this property's been vacant for some time. There are actually three, well, there's a number of parcels. I think there are three addresses that we are looking at for development. The front parcels will be re-subdivided into the four duplex units you see on the plan. As Mr. Martin indicated, the southernmost driveway is going to access this L-shaped residential parcel, which is R1 and will remain R1. The developer intends to put in a single-family detached dwelling on that parcel, but, you know, it has been zoned business for some time, but it has been vacant for some time. This area is, you know, predominantly residential, and we feel like this is a good use, a good blend in the community. There are several duplex projects that have been constructed along Leesville Road, so we think this blends in very nicely with the area. And if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Great, thank you, Mr. Walton. And do we have any members of the public who are here to speak on behalf of just the developers? Okay, and no opposition? Do we have anything by email? Okay, well, I think we can close the public hearing then, and any questions or any discussions on this we can raise now.
I have a question, Norm, about what about the back part of the property? Did you say what will happen with that?
The L-shaped piece?
Well, whatever's directly behind all four units.
The piece that Mr. Martin has his hand on?
No, I just mean the, it's in the gray area.
Oh, no, that'll just be an extension of those lots, so the lots will be that depth, and so that'll be a real yard.
No plans to build four more units?
No, ma'am, no.
And the connector? Are you planning to connect those?
Yeah, we have no opposition in connecting those driveways for connectivity.
Would the density for R3 preclude any additional building down the road if someone wanted to?
On those lots, yes.
Okay. And are we adding, it's hard to tell on the diagram, but the southern, are we adding an access to Leesville or just using the existing ones?
The southernmost one is a new entrance.
Okay.
The northernmost is an existing entrance that serves the adjacent business as well as the three residential dwellings that are there now.
I don't have any problem with it.
Who pays for the sewer connection?
The developer will be responsible for the extension of the sewer to the property. Water fronts, I think that water line is actually on our side of the project, so there's no bores under Leesville Road, so that's pretty easy.
So I was noticing, and this might be self-explanatory if I really read, maybe I'm missing something. The red area in front, is that a sidewalk?
Yes.
Okay.
We highlighted it red for you, Tom.
No, no, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with it. It seems to be conforming to what's already in the community.
Yeah, and there's some duplexes just down the road, as you all have mentioned, that I remember when they were being built, I was kind of concerned, but they actually don't look bad. And Leesville's one of the few roads, I shouldn't say that, but it's something where the traffic has actually gotten better because of the intersection work at Timberlake and Greenview or whatever it is on the other side. They've added really nice access on both ends, so I think Leesville's really improved a lot. So we always talk about traffic. I don't think traffic's even a concern with this project.
I would agree with all of that, and I would move that we accept the proposal as noted on the sheet.
I'll second it.
Okay, so any other discussion before we put to vote?
No, I always appreciate when the petitioners or the representative add a letter, descriptive letter, like we got in this one. It's, we've been seeing a few more of those lately, and it's nice that, it personalizes it and it also just kind of summarizes things nicely. I know it's not required, but there was one in here from Norm, so I always encourage those in any of our petitions.
I do have one thought. I know there's a motion on the table, but should it be two motions?
Exactly, yeah, there's two things.
It seems like I need to withdraw my motion and move that we approve the, change the flume. That'd be correct, right?
And rezone, yeah.
And then have a second to rezone.
Amend the flume and rezone the acreage from B1 to R3.
I would second both of those.
Okay, good catch. All right. No other comments? We'll go ahead and put it to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Great, unanimous. Thank you all for bringing that forward. Look forward to seeing how you do in City Council, and thank you for bringing that. Great. Next order of business is to hear, really to discuss the practice and the value of our traffic impact analyses, and Mr. Walton has been kind enough to offer that. We mentioned it in the last meeting, so, Norm, if you'd like to come up and work with Tom and, thank you all. You have a good day, and help educate us a little bit.
So I'll start us off, but since Norm was here, we thought it'd be a great time to have a conversation with the Planning Commission, really talk with you kind of about what goes on behind the scenes before it gets to you, because it's quite a bit. Just talk with you about the process, kind of the timing of the petitions and what's going on on the city side, and then Norm will talk with you about what they do on their side. So that's, our agenda today is to talk with you again about the public hearing process on the city and then the petitioner's side, and then to leave plenty of time just for discussion and answering any questions that you may have. So how does a project start? It typically starts by an email or a phone call, and that could either be from the developer or the engineer. Hey, we've got this idea. What do you think about it? What's involved? Do you think it'll work? And we look at it fairly quickly and say, yeah, that's a possibility, or no, that, don't even think about it. And you'll see, as Norm starts talking, they have about six decision points that they go through before a project actually gets built, and that's one of the decision points for them, is kind of, you know, I would guess, staff's reaction to their original proposal. And then from there, they may come in and have informal meetings with staff, economic development, depending on the nature of it, and we sit down with them and have conversations about the process, what the concerns are, and how best to move forward. So then it would go to what's called the city's technical review committee, and I'm sure you've heard about that committee, but wanted you to know actually who serves on it. It's made up of members from American Electric Power, the Assessor's Office, Building Inspections, Economic Development, Engineering Division, the Transportation Engineer, our Environmental Reviewers, Fire, Greater Lynchburg Transit Company, Planning Staff, obviously Police, Water Resources, looking at the water sewer, and zoning. It's a lot of different people looking at these plans before they ever get to the Planning Commission. So, you know, what is the purpose of it? You know, to my, I've been here since 93, and they were doing this process prior to my arrival, and it's really the one-stop shop for plan review. Prior to the TRC being implemented, if Norm submitted a plan, I'm not sure if you, you're old, but you're not old as I am, but they would, the engineers would actually have to take the plan around to different places and get it approved and reviewed.
No, I'm not that old.
So I've heard speak of it, didn't actually witness this, but that's the way it used to happen. And the city put this technical review committee process in place to just have everyone in the room at one time looking at the plan, and we try to keep it very informal and just answer any questions that they have, because our job is to move projects forward. Our job is really not to stymie development, contrary to popular belief. I always say our mission is not attrition. Our mission is to help you get your project approved. And that's not to say that sometimes there are projects that are probably not the best thing for the city and will take a, you know, a stance against that, but typically, before it gets to you, we've worked very hard with the engineers and developers to make the project something that at least staff feels is acceptable to you guys. And what do we do at the TRC? We review it for compliance with the city code and ordinances, all the different codes out there, whether it be transportation, stormwater, zoning, you name it, it's getting reviewed at that time, all right? So how does the process work? We do offer what's called a pre-technical review committee meeting. So this can be anything of an idea on a sketch on a brown paper bag. If they want to submit it and say, hey, what do you think about this? We offer this as a, on an as-needed basis, so you don't have to wait for any submittal schedules. If you've got an idea, we'll sit down and talk with you about it, and we offer that as a free service. And typically, it improves the formal submittal process when they actually submit formal drawings. They kind of have an idea of what the city's looking for before it gets there. We have a submittal schedule that typically follows every two weeks. You know, deadline like for today, that this rezoning plan was originally submitted on May the 3rd, went to TRC two weeks later on May 17th, and it ends up to you on June 8th. Got typical, it would've gone to the City Council on July 12th, but they decided to cancel, move that meeting to later in July. Prior to COVID, we met in person. Every two weeks, everyone got around a table, we put the plans out, put them on the screen, and had that face-to-face conversation. When COVID came, we went to virtual meetings, and we have stayed with the virtual meetings. Actually, the feedback we have gotten is that the engineers and developers like them better, because they're not sitting at City Hall waiting for the previous, you know, review to finish. They don't have to spend the time driving down to City Hall, you know, and they're getting the same service. You know, have to credit Anna and Rachel Forsison for putting that, and Eve Mergenthall for putting that process in place, but it's worked very well for us, and we're staying with that. Also, you know, for as a developer that's not in the area, they don't have to fly to Lynchburg, right? So it works very well. So how does a buy-right plan? So that is a plan that the Planning Commission wants, you know, it's submitted on those deadline dates. Two weeks later, it goes to that TRC meeting. Again, it's virtual right now. We have the conversation, give comments verbally, and then four days later, the comments go out in writing to the representative, which is typically the engineer, and the project owner developer. And I will say that as comments come in, the engineer can look on our web-based tracking system projects and see what the comments are in writing, but we still send the comments out physically on that Monday following the TRC meeting. Then, once they receive the written comments, it's entirely up to the engineer and the project owner of when those plans are resubmitted. They do not have to wait for any deadline. It could, they could resubmit them two days later, they could submit them two weeks later, but that's entirely up to them. Once they submit the revised plan to us, city staff gets 10 working days, so essentially another two weeks to review the revised plan. Now, just because we have 10 days doesn't mean we take 10 days. We're really starting to strive to do things quicker, so if we don't need to take the full 10 days, we won't, okay? If all the comments have been addressed, they did everything that city staff requested them to do, and they haven't changed anything, we process the plans for signature. Now, that means what's involved in that. Before we sign it, if there's any bonds that are required for stormwater, erosion of summit control, any work in the right of way, the city engineer, we won't sign the plans until we get those bonds, right? Because once we sign it, they can go off and get building permits. So we wait until the bonds are submitted, and there's a process for that, too. If it's not ready to be signed, we send them written comments, and it's on them to revise the plan again and resubmit. Can it get in a vicious cycle? Absolutely it can. It's just a matter of, and I think that comes down to a matter of communication. I think we've gotten a lot better. A while back, we started asking for a comment response letter, so Mr. Walton will submit a letter saying, okay, planning, here was your comment, and here's where we addressed it, and makes it a lot easier for us to review the revised plans. So that actually helps us quite a bit. I will say that not a lot, but at times, staff will miss something, and because it is a code and ordinance, we have to go back and tell them to fix it, and I think sometimes on their side, something may change. And if something changes on your side, then it changes the comment on our side, right? So you see how it can go in a cycle, but we strive to get the plans turned around in a very reasonable time period. Now, if it's, I should change that, that's not buy right, but if it involves a public hearing, the submittal of the public hearing application and photographs of the posted notification signs are submitted on the deadline. If we do not have photographs of the signs and they have to be up 30 days prior to the Planning Commission, then the schedule gets altered, okay? Because we can't move it forward if the notifications aren't done. Again, two weeks later, it goes to a TRC meeting, four days, the written comments are issued, and then this is where things really start to kind of get busy behind the scenes for us, because we have to start doing property owner notifications, we have to write a legal notice, we have to make sure it gets to the newspaper on a certain date, you know, we have to write the PC report, and I can tell you that Anna will find you when she needs a legal notice done, right? She will come looking for you, and she's very good at keeping me on track. So from there, you know, we've written the report, we send it to you. If you think about it, you guys really get about three to four working days to read the report and look at it, all right? Which isn't a lot of time, but that's about what it works out to be. About two weeks after it, you make your decision, like this last project, typically in about two weeks, it would go to a city council business item briefing, and that's a new thing that has come about with the new city manager, but we just briefly tell council what's coming up so that they'll know, and then two weeks later, it'll go to a council public hearing. Now, I put it here, but within those, within that time period, there's, again, there's a lot of stuff going on. The legal notices have to be posted again, the council reports have to be drafted, the ordinances and the resolutions, all of that stuff has to happen. Once it goes to a city council public hearing, if they approve it, it goes back to the technical review committee, because then at that time, it's no longer a concept plan, they're trying to get full construction documents done.
So let's just adapt to your stage, because oftentimes there are questions about, you know, will we plan to do this, screening, silt management, whatever, retention, whatever. That takes place once council says this is okay to go ahead, but it would seem to me that that would be almost as involved as what you'd already done up until that point.
Well, talking about things like the, where-
Where are the details? There's always a bunch of details out.
Well, think about it, if you're a developer and you've got a concept and you either need approval of a conditional use permit of a rezoning, you don't want to put a lot of time, money into developing full-blown construction documents if you don't know you're going to get it approved, right? So typically, after council renders their decision, that's when they'll start, you know, drawing everything to scale, making, identifying what trees they're going to plant, talking about how big the retention facilities need to be, if they're going to buy off like stormwater credits, and they do all of that. There's a lot of work on their side also.
Does that come back to you guys?
Yeah, it goes back to the technical review committee, absolutely.
And that's where the decision's made, the technical review standpoint?
Well, we make sure, so after council approves this for a public hearing item, we make sure that the plans meet the requirements of any code and zoning ordinance, and if it doesn't, it gets back in that cycle, right? Oh, and we didn't even talk about proffers and conditions, but like if they proffer something along the way, if it's, if they're not adhering to that proffer, it doesn't get approved, all right? So we're checking all of that to make sure that happens. So I know Norm's going to talk with you a little bit more about the traffic impact study, but that's typically coming, that's being prepared somewhere within the time that it's submitted to us to start the review process, to about this time here, where the revised concept plan is submitted. Because once it's submitted by the engineer, our engineering staff look at it and say, yes, we concur with this, it was done within the engineering standards, according to whatever it is, a manual, uniform traffic control. We agree with your numbers, yes. If they don't, then typically what will happen is we'll pull it to another meeting, all right? Because we do not like to send forward projects to you where the traffic studies have not been done, because it's not, how can you really make an informed decision if you don't know what the traffic impacts are, all right? And how can we make an informed decision?
And the assumption is that the first visit to the TRC has really ironed out broadly the impacts, for example, like traffic. It's been to TRC, they probably have said, yeah, this is going to be pretty good, so we should already have a kind of a reasonable, you know, I mean, I look at some of the stuff that we talk about, and, you know, ones that like traffic engineers in the TRC, like, well, why are we talking about traffic if the traffic engineer is signing off on it already? Because it's coming to us after the TRC.
That's a good point. I think, you know, I'll put it to you this way, like level of service standards, you get A through D or F actually. Even though the road might handle the traffic, the end user, you know, technically and, you know, far as capacity, it'll handle it, it might feel different, you know what I mean? And that's what you guys have to think about, all right? So let's talk a little bit about when traffic studies are actually required. So anytime a use comes in, if they submit a concept plan and, you know, based on that manual, is that where the trip counts are?
Where's the ITE manual?
All right, look. I'm not an engineer, I wouldn't talk with it more. But there's basically a manual, say, for all these different uses, it's going to generate this amount of trips, and a peak hour and on a daily basis. So if it's a use being proposed that's going to generate more than 50 peak hour trips or 500 daily trips, that's when a traffic study's done. And traffic studies aren't cheap. And traffic studies aren't cheap, and they take time, and Mr. Walton will tell you about what's involved in doing that. But there's a whole science and, you know, technical process that goes through to doing those studies. But, so how do we formulate recommendations to you? Well, we base that on what the existing zoning is in the area, the history of the area, we look at the existing land use patterns, we look heavily at what the comprehensive plan, the future land use map calls for the area. And we also look at our codes and ordinances. You know, if the property's not big enough to do what they're proposing, you know, that's going to get a negative recommendation from us. We also take into consideration other comments from TRC. Right? If we have our environmental person telling us, you know, this is going to be really bad for the downstream receiving channel, you know, that's going to go into our recommendation, and we're going to point that out in the reports. And we look at the impacts that are going to arise from the development based on sound planning practices, you know, traffic, impact to the environment, the land use, what type of city are we trying to develop and be in the future, and the whole gamut. And of course, we look at the traffic study. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Walton, and he's going to kind of talk to you about what's involved with their process.
And so what I did is I tried to boil our process down to where we have decision points of whether we're going to move forward with a project or not. The first decision point is similar to what Tom's decision point is, or first item is, you know, a developer comes to me, and says, we have this piece of property that we have an option on, or getting ready to put an option on, or we're interested in developing. And most of the time, they come to me and they want to put apartments here, or, you know, it's a commercial development. They have some use in specific in mind, and then we start doing a layout. You know, we start, usually I have them in my conference room, and we pull up the internet and open up the city GIS and look at water and sewer and figure out where we are as far as, you know, the roadway system, what kind of lanes are there, what infrastructure is in place that can serve the development they want. And there are times that we just have to tell them, one reason or another, zoning's not right, future land use map doesn't support it, or there's not enough infrastructure there, and, you know, their development just can't go where they want it to go. And so that's our first decision point, which is really informal and just me. Typically, after that, if we can get a layout that works and the client's satisfied with it, we usually call Tom. Sometimes, it's just a meeting with Tom, sometimes it's a phone call. If there's a zoning issue, we'll ask Kevin Henry to become involved. When it becomes more involved with traffic, we call Lee Newland. When it gets to that size of a group, then we take advantage of the pre-TRC process to where we come in and sit down with everybody and discuss the project in a very informal basis. And that's generally our second decision point. I mean, we have come out of that meeting and determined that it's a no-go, you know, and the project dies there. If, and as we go through with city staff, and usually at that point is when we have talked to Lee, Lee Newland, and have determined if we need a traffic study and what type of traffic study. Some of them are more involved than others, some of them we just need to determine what the length of a right turn lane is, or if a left turn lane is necessary. Some larger developments, you know, kind of grow from beyond the project site, and we start looking at intersections and how it impacts, you know, a larger area than just our project site. So we have a meeting with Lee Newland and his staff to determine what size and type of traffic study that we need. Then it's usually a little bit of time between that meeting and, from the time we go to TRC, where we can regroup, really get everything down on paper like it needs to be. And a lot of times, we look at grading, you know, to determine, you know, if it's a large import material, a site, or if we can balance it on-site, what kind of water, sewer extensions we need, what kind of traffic improvements we need to make, just on a general basis. But, you know, it takes some time to get that plan in a state that can be reviewed by staff. Like Mr. Martin said, typically, we don't have the traffic study a hundred percent complete at that point in time. We usually have some ideas of what's going on. You know, the traffic engineer will have taken counts or have attained enough data to where we can kind of get a rough idea of what's going on. And so by the time we go to TRC, we kind of have a good feeling whether this project is going to move forward or if it's feasible or not. After TRC, we come to you and present our case to you. Once we have all of our information together, it's been well-vetted by city staff, reviewed, and comments provided and addressed before we come back to you. So at that point in time, I mean, like Mr. Martin said, there's a considerable amount of time spent on the project, even on a conceptual plan. I mean, usually you see eleven by seventeen pieces of paper, and they're generally, what you see is kind of simple, maybe, but there has been quite a bit of thought in planning and maybe a little bit of design to get us to that point, to make sure that the project is feasible. And then we proceed on to city council with your recommendation of either approval or denial. And I know several of you are, some of you have been, are involved in the residential retail market. And at that point, you know, usually, we are working against a deadline where a developer has an option on a piece of property, so they have a contract. Typically, they haven't bought the piece of property, and the purchase of the property is contingent upon a successful rezoning or SUP through city council. So we haven't started any real hard design. We've got enough design to kind of figure out if the project's feasible or not, but we really haven't started any hard design, because usually the developer doesn't own the property, or, not always, but a fair amount of the time, he doesn't own the property until we get through the city council staff process. Once we get through a city council decision, then we actually start into the construction document, preparing detailed construction plans. But at that point, we do have a hard traffic study that's been prepared, completed, reviewed by staff, reviewed by you, the planning commission, and reviewed by city staff. We know what we're going to do as far as stormwater management. We know how we're going to connect to the project with sanitary sewer and water. We know what the yield or the density of the project's going to be. So it's a lot of things we know, but there's also a lot of things that we just haven't gotten into the detail down in the weeds on the technical design of the project. So, you know, with all of that, there are multiple decision points that we have to go through, even before we get here to planning commission, to make sure that these projects are viable and have passed the litmus test of the city as well as you guys, before we go to complete plans. So after the April thirteenth meeting, Tom and I had a conversation, and we felt it important to kind of lay this out. Mr. Rogers and I had a really good conversation by phone, and I think you felt it also important to kind of lay this out. So I kind of wanted to go through that relatively briefly, and then just have a dialogue with you guys. And I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Great, thank you. I think there probably are some questions, so you can just feel free to stand right there. I'd start it by saying, I think there were comments made, you know, maybe not questioning the results, but really what the results meant for a street. And so maybe you could comment on that, because that's one of the things that, you know, I think I've said it before, I've told you, traffic is not my highest priority concern, but, you know, we know residents are concerned, and when they see something that says a certain number of cars per hour, and they start doing the math, they start wondering, well, that doesn't make sense, why, how does that work? So maybe you could talk a little bit about that.
Yeah. So we do go through a process. One, typically, the traffic engineer, if it's a detailed study, will go out and count traffic, count cars, determining turning movements at intersections to try to get a feel on a typical day. And usually, they try to do Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday of the school year. So we don't like to do traffic studies in the summer. We usually try to do them through September, from September through May, when it's, the school's in session. So we get an accurate average of what the traffic's doing on a daily basis. And so once we have an understanding of how the traffic is moving, then we take the project traffic generation. If we have multiple entrances, we try to determine what percentage of the traffic's going to use each entrance, and then out of those percentages, what percentage is going left and right, to try to determine how that's going to impact the flow of traffic, which intersections are going to get heavily burdened by the additional traffic, and how we can overcome that. So like Mr. Martin said, there's a traffic generation manual that's an industry standard that's used on a typical project to determine the peak hour trips, as well as the average daily trips, to determine the impact, or how much traffic's going to be generated from the site. Traffic engineers also have software that will model timings on signalized intersections. It's actually graphical, and you can actually watch the car move through the intersections. But they do model those intersections to try to determine the queuing lengths, how long people are going to sit, you know, in a stop condition, how many cycles they may sit through a stop condition. All of that, the time it takes from a person to where they enter to the area of influence of an intersection from the time they go through the intersection is part of the level of service calculation that Mr. Martin mentioned, the A through F. And so what we don't want to do is make any of those intersections worse. And so we work with the traffic engineers, as well as city staff, to come up with means and offsetting means to offset that traffic impact. It may be lengthening turn lanes, or maybe changing the signalization timing, or just a number of different things that we can try to do to minimize the impacts of our traffic to an intersection. And some of the projects are just so big, you know, we have to get really creative. I mean, and sometimes, they are just going to be a negative impact. You know, there are times when projects make sense as far as the future land use map zoning, and the city desire for whatever service or commodity that our project is going to serve, but an adjacent intersection may be at the borderline of being at an acceptable level. So then it becomes, you know, is it the developer's responsibility for expanding and improving the intersection, or does the city have some responsibility in that because of, you know, background growth or whatever? So there are projects to where there's a cost share between the city and the developer on those improvements. So it really can get pretty dynamic pretty quick, you know, looking at some of these projects. I hope that answered your question.
Yeah, that's good. Thanks.
I had a question about, you said, sometimes you just tell them, looking at the infrastructure, the infrastructure's just not here, you shouldn't consider doing this. And I'm thinking of one thing that came before us, I don't know who was involved. I don't know, I don't know. It was several years ago, it was someplace off of Timberlake Road, between Timberlake and Windhurst, and it was a place with a very narrow road. I mean, you could barely get, and there was a blind lady going down the road, and all kinds of problems. And I think we voted it down, I don't know what happened with city council. But, you know, that was one of those places where we thought, well, the city needs to widen this road. It was a street, and because otherwise, it would have been a good place to put whatever development was going in. And I really don't remember the particulars. But does that come up much when you just say the street can't handle it? I mean, it's kind of like, if you build it, they will come, or if we build this, the city will come in and make the road wider, but you can't count on that, right?
No, and it becomes a conversation between the development team and city staff as to what makes sense for the city. You know, if we're, if we have a development that's relatively close to Timberlake Road, and that street is already stressed, you know, maybe it is the developer's obligation to improve from their entrance to Timberlake Road. But, you know, if it's a kind of a collector corridor where there's multiple neighborhoods feeding into, you know, a collector roadway, and then we're tying into that, that conversation becomes more complicated, and it's similar to what I was just speaking of with the intersection. Maybe it's a cost share, maybe we do...
So that is an option?
Yes.
The offer could pay to widen the road, or help kick some in?
And sometimes, we will widen or improve the roadway in front of our project with the understanding that the city may come through in the future and finish the widening. But usually, we do have that conversation, and we hope that that information gets passed on to y'all during either the staff report or, you know, in my presentation to you.
Yeah, a lot of our discussion, when this comes up, you know, we say, developers tend to... Developer in this street, they shouldn't be the ones financially penalized because they're number ten.
Yeah.
And so we approve it, and then the eleventh developer comes in, and we repeat that same conversation. And they're all small. I mean, so at some point, we need to have that open discussion, that, hey, this is having a broader impact, we've got to figure out something to do, and not just keep kicking the can down the road because they're the most recent developer. It's like the reverse of the sidewalks. You're the first one to put in a sidewalk to nowhere, but you're still going to do it. So, and that's, and I don't, there's obviously no simple answer to that.
No, it is not. And we have the same conversation with the counties, all the surrounding municipalities. I mean, you know, we do a lot of work in the forest area, and the forest area's experienced a lot of growth. And, you know, 221 was recently, I say recently, it's fifteen years or so, ten or fifteen years ago, widened to five lanes, but a lot of the other roads are not. And so then, it always is the question, whether it be a street, or waterline, or sewer network, you know, whose responsibility is it to widen it? Do you wait for development to occur? And then is it the government, local municipality, whomever's responsibility to react to growth? Or is, you know, the developer responsible for some portion of it? And I think it depends on the situation, and it's probably a blended answer. I mean, in certain cases, I think it's a clear cut, you know, the developer, you know, should be responsible. But then there's also cases to where, you know, maybe the locality just hasn't kept up with the growth, and now you have undersized infrastructure that just won't meet the demand, whether this, you know, this particular development occurs or not.
And I think at that point, what it boils down to for the city is return on investment. Right? How much city dollars are being put up to make these improvements versus how much might be returned from the project? And I think the other thing I'll point out is, you know, as Mr. Walton mentioned, once the plan gets to the planning commission, once it gets to this point, it is highly unlikely, I won't say it'll never happen, but it is highly unlikely that a project that wouldn't work without solutions is going to get to you. Because by that time, they've made their decision points that either it's too expensive, it's not financially feasible to move forward with it, or it's just not going to work. So when it comes to you, there is coming to you with solutions. Doesn't mean you have to accept them, right? But technically, it could work based on sound engineering.
That is right, yeah.
If we get it, and staff has recommended against it, would that be those cases where there are some problems? Because they do come to us, and it would be a public right probably to...
And I think you can look back historically, there are very few times that staff has recommended denial on a project, right? And it doesn't mean you have to agree with staff, not at all. But staff is saying, technically, this project will work, and it meets all the comp planning and codes and zoning ordinance and transportation engineering standards. Doesn't mean you have to approve it, there's multiple reasons you could choose to approve or deny a project. But if it gets to you with a favorable recommendation, you can be fairly assured that it'll work technically. technically.
Yeah, I totally agree with that. I remember the case that Ms. Barry was talking about, and that's an extreme case. But the issue in my mind, that one, just as little background, was because of the traffic on Timberlake Road, and because of the traffic back through Windhurst, a lot of those Timberlake roads were the cut-throughs. And the problem that we ran, the problem that I ran into was, we have a bad situation. You've already seen what this could look like down the road on Ward's Road, because, you know, Ward's ferries are already a disaster. So I guess my first call as a commissioner is, I don't wanna repeat a mistake we've made before, that I, you know, to the best of my ability. So here comes the traffic study that shows that for this property, we're only adding a little bit, but I know that we've already got a difficult situation. And again, I understand this is an extreme, but what I'm struggling with is, how do I situate this, how do I think about this in my mind, so I can come up with a decision that makes the most sense? Because we can't do without the development.
Right.
But we're not gonna get the development if we shut everybody off on the street. Does that make sense?
It absolutely does.
And so I'm struggling with, and we don't see that every day, I got it, but still, that's the, that's the sticking point. So anytime you see a traffic study, you know it's only looking at this element of a much bigger problem. It's just hard to figure out how to make, how to extrapolate from that one thing, and figure out how to incorporate that into the larger backdrop.
Yeah, and maybe a little of that answer, especially on the tail end of that. We do work with, like I mentioned, Lee Newland and his staff, and we try to determine, the best we can, how far out from a project we're gonna have a burdensome impact on any kind of intersection or roadway. So we do sit down with, with the engineering staff, and we look at our project. We have, we will have a rough idea of how much traffic we're gonna generate. Mr. Newland will have a good idea of how much traffic's gonna be on that road, and, I mean, we all live here, I mean, we know where there's traffic problems and where there's not. And so, so then we use all of that information, and we try to figure out where, you know, how far out that traffic is gonna impact, and we, and we do study that. Like Mr. Martin said, traffic studies are not inexpensive, and the farther out you go, the more expensive they become. And, and so we do try to, you know, we're, we're working against city staff, trying to make that footprint as small as possible, and maybe they're going the other way to try to expand it. But we kinda negotiate, and we come to what we believe is an acceptable area that we need to study to understand how far out this thing is gonna impact traffic. I think that's a fair assessment.
I think one thing with the traffic studies, in years past, we've gotten pages and pages of detailed intersection diagrams that none of us look at. And then sometimes, we get almost no info. And then a couple of times, and we discussed this a few meetings ago, we get, you know, three or four paragraphs summarizing level of service and what's going on. And to me, that's been ideal, because it tells us what's going on without the minutia of all the, you know...
Right.
And we don't always get that, and we talked about how that would be nice, to see a two or three paragraph summary, not, not all the data, but just, here's what's happening with the current level of service, and here's what the projection is.
Right.
When we get that, I think that's a useful tool.
And I think that's, that's good feedback for staff, to know what helps the commission is, you know, kind of a summary of it. I think as Mr. Walton spoke earlier, some traffic studies are more detailed than others, right? The larger the project, and the further they go out in the intersections they look at, obviously, that's gonna be a more involved analysis than if it's just, do we need to lengthen this turn lane? Or do we need to cut the slope back to get a site distance, right? So, but yes, for staff, that's good feedback to kinda summarize the traffic analysis for you. Because I don't like reading them either.
You really?
I don't like reading the traffic analysis.
Come on, man.
I play an engineer on TV.
When I, when I talk to people, and I get feedback, they, there's generally a complaint, and I think it's interesting, the dynamic that we have here. I really appreciate you coming. You know, I love it when we get something that I know has been really thoroughly vetted, and I think, you know, I would say, our staff does a great job at trying to help people put together good plans. And when they don't, you know, there might be a little pushback, but, you know, often people don't, they, you know, like, if we just trust, if Tom says, hey, the traffic studies are good, you know, I trust Tom, I, because I know that he's, his, he's always has the foot forward for the community. And, and so I like to see how things get vetted. I really appreciate that, that effort goes into our planning.
Well, I'll say this, is that, you know, the engineers in the area also subscribe to a certain set of ethical standards, right? And it's their license that they're submitting this information under. They're not going to risk submitting you false information and lose their career or their license, right? So they're, they're going to submit you factual information based on, you know, best practices.
So the traffic study, is that done by an independent company? Or is it your, your company that's doing the traffic study?
It depends. We... I'm very comfortable doing a simple turn lane analysis, looking at site distance on a smaller project. If it becomes a larger project, like Midtown, I would call EPR in a heartbeat and, you know, get them on our design team, because I am not qualified to do that. So it just depends on the size and the scope of the project. The larger ones, we definitely utilize a third party to do those, a firm that specializes in traffic engineering.
Are there a lot of those around, I mean, that you call?
There are, I've dealt with three or four in my time at PNO. We use EPR out of Charlottesville a lot. They have a lot of institutional knowledge with the city of Lynchburg. In the times that there has not been a traffic engineer in the city of Lynchburg, I think they have been utilized as a resource for the city. So, so they do understand the traffic dynamics of the city of Lynchburg very well. Ballser and Associates, Davenport and Associates, are other firms that we've used. So, I mean, there are several firms, not a lot.
Yeah.
But a few.
Have you, and you mentioned possibly getting a study that they just said, the traffic, this area cannot hold that traffic. I mean, have you really had a study come through, where you're like, we can't add this, the area won't handle it?
Usually, we don't get to the study part. Usually, we have, we get to the meeting with Mr. Newland, Tom Martin, and maybe we have our traffic engineer there, and we just...
And it gets talked about even before it gets that far?
Yeah, whether it, it would be a corner lot at a busy intersection, and, you know, what we're doing there is just not gonna work. Yes, we've actually had, you know, traffic to deny a project before we even send it to TRC.
And we've gotten petitions where level of service has dropped pretty dramatically. But as has been mentioned, you have to consider the trade-offs and return of investment. But we've seen a few come, come to us, Graves Mill Road, for example.
But pretty much what I've taken away is, by the time you're thinking about actually pulling the trigger on a traffic study, you've run enough of what those tables tell you, that you've got a pretty, you're on the paper pretty well. You may not have tailored it for us, but you have a pretty good idea.
Right, we not, we might not be down to the, you know, the nth detail, but we have a good idea of what the traffic's gonna be. We have a good idea of, you know, what kind of improvements we're gonna need to make, if we're gonna have to signalize an intersection, and if we're gonna have to add turn lanes, lengthen turn lanes, do whatever. We'll have a general idea of what we're gonna have. I mean, because we have to, we have to provide a performer to the client. We have to provide some type of cost basis for construction, you know, so we, we have to know that. And usually, that's provided before we go to TRC.
Yeah.
You know, that they understand the costs and the complexity of the project, even before we submit it to TRC.
I'm just curious, what's the range of costs of a traffic survey, from the low end to, you know, I'm sure it goes way on up, but...
So if we have a complex enough project to where we have to contact one of the firms that I mentioned, you know, some of the more simpler ones, you know, are gonna run in the range of eight to ten, eight, six to eight thousand dollars, and it can go up to twenty-five thousand dollars pretty easily, if we have a wide range, you know, have to study an interchange or several intersections. And they can get pricey.
I felt that was very informative, thank you.
You're quite welcome.
Thank you.
That gives me a lot more respect about the process.
Sure does.
And I would also add, Tom, your intro, I think should be put into a handout for new planning commission members, and, and maybe even put on the flow chart, put on the planning webpage.
I drew a flow chart for myself, because I wanted to see how it...
Yeah, I mean, but that's, I mean, there were details on there, like, I never knew who really was on TRC, for example. So I think that would be a useful handout, and again, maybe putting that on the planning webpage, but certainly for new, new planning commission members, having that kind of a handout would be useful.
Do you invite planning commission to TRC?
We do not, because we...
We have localities that do, and localities that don't.
Well, I know some localities do. I think we try to keep our process as, you know, if, we don't wanna, we don't, we wanna keep it very informal, and I'm not sure as having an appointed person. You're more welcome to come if you like.
We do get the agenda.
Yeah.
So we can follow it, we follow up on that.
I like getting that.
You can invite anyone you want.
I know, I would invite any of you to come to any of mine, especially if it's contentious. I mean, I think the background is beneficial to, to hear the conversation, you know, especially at TRC, so...
Yeah, well, if you, and if you've looked through, like, on eTrackit, because I use that a lot, the, the amount of time sometimes that it takes people to actually meet the demands of the TRC, and the, and the letters back and forth, because some of that stuff gets linked, you're like, wow, there's been a lot of effort into making sure this meets these standards, so...
That's right. It's volumes of information on a certain project.
Right, it has to be done correctly, because, you know, once something is built, it's there for a very long time, and you wanna make sure that it's gonna serve the developer well, but the city well.
Right.
You know, I'll never forget, early in my career, I went to a planning conference, and they were talking about developers, and there, there's always this, kind of this sense that, you know, the city and developers don't get along, and that is totally not true. Developers are not bad people. They're in business to make money, just like, you know, you go to your respective jobs to make money and take care of yourself. And development is good for the city. Not saying that all development everywhere is good, but that's kinda what makes the city grow and continue to sustain itself, so...
Well, thank y'all for listening. Thank you, Tom, for setting this up.
All right, I don't think we have anything else on the agenda, anything that people need, I do wanna mention, again, if you're doing vacation coming up, and it's gonna interfere second or fourth Wednesday, make sure you let us know. But have a meeting in two weeks?
Yeah.
I don't think so.
It's not, it's not here?
What's that?
Twenty-second? It's on, it's on the...
Does it say?
That's the next scheduled meeting.
Next scheduled meeting, but...
Okay, cool.
So any, when will we hear back from Mrs. Site and the Graves Mill project?
That's, and that area there, where they choose to, when to resubmit.
Okay.
Have there been any plans, have there been any further plans to do anything with the, whatever we call that bridge over from Graves Mill Road that goes over the expressway? We were talking at one point about changing the way you exit off of the expressway to go to Enterprise Drive and to Graves Mill Road?
I'm not a hundred percent sure, maybe, you know, maybe if this was useful information to the commission, I mean, maybe I could invite, I should've invited Lee to this, but like, city engineer to come and just kinda talk to you about various projects that are going, but I'll find that information.
The only reason that one sticks in my head is, we were talking about that during a lot of the Graves Mill Road, and if...
Yeah, Bob, some of that came from the region...
Two Thousand study as well.
Yeah.
And a lot of that was down the road when funding becomes available.
I just remember, we were talking about, with all this stuff with roads, whatever it's called, I just lost the word, but it was a, it was a woman who was the traffic engineer who left like, two weeks after that meeting. I can't even remember who it was. But we were sitting there looking at it going, because it was what you were talking about, where we had like, an F or whatever it was, and, you know, and traffic quality, and a lot of that was dependent on how we processed traffic along that interchange.
And that was gonna be one of those crazy bridges that...
Yeah, they were also like, yeah.
Yep.
And that...
That we don't have one, we don't have one like that in the city at all, there's...
No, the only one I've seen like that's outside of Charlottesville. But, but I just didn't know, because it seemed to me that was a huge choke point. And if that was indeed something that was gonna get done, and I think this was, was this last year or two years ago?
Those, I think that was several years ago.
It was, it was more than, yeah, it was a while ago. But I was just thinking if, you know, with everything, everything seems to be coming to fruition all at the same time.
I think possibly they're looking at doing something to the exit ramp that goes up beside the Chevrolet place, but let me talk with Lee and figure out with that.
I just haven't, I was just thinking about that, I just hadn't heard anything else about that, so it's not that big a deal other than the fact I was thinking about it.
Well, we'll find out when we make a note of that.
Thanks for that, Tom, I'd just like to throw my voice in mine, I thought that was, that was fabulous. I don't know whether I've been around long enough to appreciate what all's going on, and you've told me before, or what, but that was fabulous.
Any, anybody else, anything else they wanna?
I wanna take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, all right? No objections, we are outta here.